Board of Trustees, June eighteenth, February the tenth. If you would all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Jesus, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
We'll now move on to the call to the public. Do you have any comments on the call to the public?
None, it's time to shut them down.
And let's move on to item four, discussion items. Number one, one hundredth anniversary of Nogales Public Library in two thousand and twenty-three. Now.
Yes, morning. Good evening, your name is?
Yes.
Yes.
So make a call.
How's that? Um, I think we're really, we passed around actually a sheet or two pages last time. Well, this is, yeah, two pages. Um, ideas for our hundredth anniversary of the library. Um, when we celebrated the ninetieth birthday in two thousand and thirteen, um, it was in October. So I guess one of the things we want to consider is establishing, before we even, maybe set up perhaps on how to organize this in the right. We want to set up, um, establish a date. We want to have this on, we want to stick with the October date. We want to stick to a one month celebration of our anniversary of the year. So we should probably have some discussion about that. And I hope everybody's had an opportunity to look at the, some of the ideas I've put down. Um, obviously they were just all about that. So, um, can we go around the room and kind of give some feedback on that?
I'll let you go ahead and come to the other side.
Okay. Uh, can we start with Marcy?
Oh, well, basically what I, I might look over there. I would kind of be able to with Denise. Basically Denise is going to put budget in for this year. More so also fall of here, ten thousand dollars each year. Basically, that's a contribution of five, five thousand dollars on the county, five thousand dollars on the city. And we even think that we even could have a nice celebration of that.
Anything else? Okay, um, Veronica.
Thanks, and as always, you do so much work here. Um, I guess what I would like to s- to consider as a group is doing something at least month long. It doesn't have to be obviously every day or large, but something that keeps the celebration alive more than just one time as we did before. So, um, again, cost and what we do, uh, how we are, those who determine it. It would be wonderful if you could have some kind of lecture series on the history, um, coupled with exhibits and photos. I think, you know, what I need is, that would be very much, a lot of people just don't know how it will happen. And so that's one thought that I have. Obviously, if we could have music and we could have, um, that sort of thing, because that's still a celebratory. That would be wonderful also. Knowing that this has, um, riches in a lot of the authors that are going here have done pretty remarkable things. If we could have, yeah, possibly part of the lecture series included. Um, I could go on and on. I think, you know, all the other, um, things you could consider.
Okay, thanks. Ellen, do you have some comments, Dan?
My, uh, my initial question is, what would be the actual date to start the celebration? And then go on, I would agree with, uh, Ronnie on that, where we can go for a thirty day period, for example. But starting what particular date? And then if we want to have any type of music, I would suggest that we look at our high school plans that we have in both the others and areas of all. To be part of the celebration workbook and then just work it into the folder. But what's the second date we would start off for the celebration?
Thanks. Um, Nadia?
Yes, I, yeah, I have, um, a letter, uh, to the editor, uh, following our last celebration. You might be, is that, um, you might be interested? Oh, is that right? Sorry. Um, anyway, this is a letter to the editor that, um, uh, we wrote after the other celebration, just to give you some idea of what worked, what we did. And I don't know what the budget was. That was two thousand and thirteen. I'm not sure. I don't think we spent a great deal on that. But we had the TNA Auto Club and they had a display at the library. And Mrs. Nuth Baker made a tape. Uh, the Santa Cruz County Provincial College hosted, uh, Albert Carrillo's, who gave a, uh, a really nice lecture there and college. And, uh, the board supervisors, um, issued an anniversary confirmation to the library. And the, uh, the mayor, Phil Agarino spoke. Uh, we had the county school superintendent who spoke. And the, um, uh, Manayac and the Storten Center also spoke at that, at that event. And we had a keynote from an aide to the congressman, uh, Oliver Bravo. So those were all things that worked very well. But it was one day and then we did the lecture series. I would second what, um, yeah, uh, the lecture series idea. Um, another thing I'm wondering if we could launch it in, say, January. We'd say this is the year. And then maybe monthly have something, perhaps, uh, one book that everybody's going to read. A page or something that, um, the county would read. And, um, maybe the raffles. If you could get all these study books and have a raffle every month at each library. If there was something to add, otherwise, if you had some really wonderful suggestions, too.
So, and then Brian?
Good morning, Kenny. Uh, I've got a few notes to add to the bottom of, um, the mass draft. And these are more specific, uh, notes about history of the library. So we should look, uh, at the history of the library. Who were, who live in the library, how far we will be able to identify the library and the resources at the center? Um, if a possible former board members? I know that's going to be difficult, but make an attempt. Um, features of the building itself, where, where was the first library a hundred years ago? What building? And some specific buildings and kind of edge, we can establish the current building relatively easily. The initial election of the library, that's not too difficult because it's recent history. It's deeper history that will be harder to run an archive for. And then, of course, not to forget the county libraries, one of their biggest patch in Sonoda, which is a very, very real. So, um, I don't know, Denise, when she took office, has she ever seen any of these? Or maybe didn't get mentioned ten years ago? I, I got no idea. What, what archive, what sources are available that, that's a, that's a first question. What do we have and what can we bring out? Thank you, Professor.
And Barbara?
Um, our comment is going to be about the date. Um, and I think I have an October and February, I didn't, I didn't even figure this out. It should probably be in October because of weather and so forth. It's a wonderful time of year, so. Um, I have one other request. Um, if France has a giveaway, uh, that won the, or any of us, if France has a giveaway, um, we're all children of sorts. And Denise maybe would have some in the library if she wants to update or give us a wrap. It could be helpful because most of the books that are taken during the giveaway are mature enough. And we're down to another, in the warehouse. So that would be something. And also, our last France meeting, we discussed this so that she also, when we came up with a number of local people could possibly give presentations. So in this, in our midst, I'm not going to repeat those now, but there are a lot of local people that could, could give presentations.
That's all. Uh, Terry?
I like the idea of, uh, having some events during the year and the idea of reading, uh, you know, a book a month on themes from, uh, you know, Nogales authors and so forth. I think that would be great. Because, you know, I, I think we should do things during the year, maybe presentations and so forth. But, uh, if we could actually get Nogales residents, Santa Cruz County residents to know or to read some of the books written by, by Nogales authors, that would be great. And we should be able to figure out a way to do that. So that's my comments.
Okay. Um, well, one, here, um, who's telling people this, um, you know, the idea of sounds, you're ready for our event? So if we, if we think about October as a possibility, do we want to try a date? A date for the actual, um, the one day event? Then your other plans to have the one, or do you want to do something further?
I could agree with you, I can object now. But I think that you and Denise can get it together, come back with a proposal or, I mean, you can meet on the dates. And get a, and we'll draw up that, uh, Santa Cruz Regional Community College and involve the degree professor, uh, Eric Reeves, over here. So I think right now, I'm also the chairman of the community college board. And right now, we'd be having to get it together and write or a letter. So if there was a fee and it's a review term, we can put it into our budget because we're starting to work on our budget right now. Before it's too late to get a letter off to the board on that. And also, and who would, who would be brought with the family that is here to help with the celebration? The people that are very instrumental in establishing the library. And I think also Mayor Royal established and the administration of children was part of the library. So there's just something, but I think the essence is going to be established when we want to start this off. So we can start lining up everything and all of that.
Okay. Um, I think that's a very good idea also. I've, I've, I've got to be able to start thinking about, uh, how they would like to participate in the process. And who are going to be the chairperson for this, um, committee? Or are you going to be the librarian or are you going to be the assistant? I don't know this morning.
Well, I'll put it down. I'll put it down on the next agenda. Like, we have a name inherent to the name of the committee. And we'll go ahead and name a, a small, uh, centennial committee. And start structuring everything and bringing it to the board with the group.
Yeah, sorry.
Uh, to appoint Dr. Barra, uh, head of the committee, to the man and Denise, get it together. Prepare a different spot, visit a competition, maybe you can help the committee, the members, friends of the library, uh, this floor, the library is an administration. Kind of get it different on how members you want and where they can come from.
Is it? Okay. I'm ready to move on to the next item on the agenda. Uh, item two. Uh, before that, uh, the police department is here under Chief Gervius. And you have a guest, Chief Gervius?
Lieutenant Robert Gallego.
Baseball player, okay. You'll be right up on the agenda. Thank you for attending our meeting, Chief. The next one to the light, library district presentation by the deputy county manager, Jesus, like this. Let's begin to just step up to the podium there. And you'll have to put your, give us an update here on what you did.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today's presentation, I hope to, and, or my objective is for you guys to, to, for, for me to inform you of the current phase.
Do you want to come?
Is it just? There you go.
Yeah, that's great.
To inform you of the current phase, answer questions about the revisions, um, some timelines and right now what the current costs as we're in estimates as the architect looks at it. So with that, um, I'll, I'll start in, we, we, I think Jennifer St. John, the county manager, provided you guys with three alternatives. Going back and forth and, and looking at some of the departments that had to be represented in this building. One of them is WIOA and the program. We went back and did some, uh, revisions to the plan. And that's reflected in, in, in this new schematic here. And along with that, s- some of the computers that, and the build, some of the computers in the rooms were eliminated. So this is the, this is the new schematic that, that we're going to present to the people in Sonoda who are interested in, in, in their community center. Before I continue, uh, are you guys familiar with this? Would you guys like to go up and take a look at it? Should I pass it around? Timelines. What you'll see preliminary is that we'll start putting the IT equipment in there and start on the WIOA, uh, portion. That way we could have the, the internet installed in Marisaque. And WIO could start with the program and serving the community that way. That's when I spoke with Jennifer in the budget, I think we're, for the whole renovation and what we're looking for, is probably, we're looking at a timeframe, uh, beginning of the fiscal year so that we can appropriate the funding, the self-reforming fiscal. And it starts on Ju-, you know, the end of our fiscal year is June thirtieth, so July. What we have here in the plan, uh, the cost estimate is between three hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's the range the architect gave us in today's money.
Can we include this on this?
Yes, I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mrs. Cerrantes, you're the director of WIOE. Do you want to footnote anything in the presentation?
No, thank you, sir, unless you guys have questions that you were, been willing to.
Okay. So everybody knows this is Marisa Cerrantes, the director of the WIOE program. That's going to be in the building also in conjunction and is been working, uh, with the deputy county manager. Uh, if you could just wait, Mr. Chair, this, we're going to go down our questions or comments or the sentence. And we'll go ahead and start with Ryan.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the question I have either to you or perhaps to Denise is, per this schematic, what is the increase in square footage to the library? Can you, because I can, can you tell me what the margin effect it has now and which of the places?
I have that information, I don't have it with me. If I had, it's, it's a nee-, it's a hundred percent increase, if, if that helps out, but I can give you the exact numbers.
Yeah, I appreciate it. A hundred percent is encouraging, thank you. Uh, but specifically if possible, thank you.
Conclude, Mr. Rendell?
Yes.
Juanita?
Yes, I was just, uh, looking at the sitting.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah. I'm sorry, thank you. Um, I was, uh, looking at the, the library area is the, the computer station and the, the sitting area that's all part of the library. Is, is there any, um, thought of adding more book, uh, books into the library? Because it, it looks like it's, it's pretty similar to what is in their map of Florida's book section.
What you're seeing there is just a representation of where the books would go in the aisles. Um, I would leave that up to, uh, to the library to, to see what, what would be accomplished. Uh, yes, that's more of a representation of where it's going to go. I think there's plenty of room, uh, for, I think, whatever, uh, we want to do.
Conclude, Juanita?
Yeah, I'm looking at the draft that we have, like, uh, the sketch that we have there. The entire future library section for Sonoda is in the far left of the building.
So, so the book area right now is, it's designated, you're correct, that's, that's where it's at.
Uh, so the comments that we got when we went out there and, and drafted this was that they wanted more of a sitting area, a common area. They wanted a place for the books and they wanted conference rooms, uh, along with lockers and you'll see a little area for lockers.
Um, and, and a partition that would separate what we're calling now the community center or commuting room, uh, meeting room. So that's, I, we hope that we capture that. Now, if they had, if there's revisions, this is not the final, we'll address them at that point. We still had, there's one more presentation, that's to, uh, some of the community members in Sonoda, and we'll do that. We try to capture, or the architect tried to capture, everything that was said. Overall, we got some positive, uh, reviews on this, but, um, maybe if you have something specific that maybe I could address?
What I see there is an independent entrance for the library section in the far left. It accommodates with a conference room and the office and the area for books and shelves and all of that. Uh, whereas now that same entrance is, uh, used with the sheriff's department. Because we have that in there. And if that sheriff's section would be placed in the far right where it says visitor center.
Right.
Uh, would be more accommodated because there are a lot of facilities, uh, area for the sheriff's office. And yet still serve the community with an independent entrance at the community. So that would, that would work in nicely. With that allowing for the library section to be independent of just library and the services.
So I'm not sure if we're capturing that on the copy you have, but the sheriff, and you're right, it's on the far right. And it does have an independent access, um, so does the community center, what we're calling the, the room and the visitor center. They all have independent, uh, entrances. Now, they, they can navigate through, at times where everything's open, they can go from room to room. Am I addressing what you're asking?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
What I like about that is that the entire project is looking at independent entrance for each of the facilities that are there. And at the same time, serving the community interest.
Conclude, Mr. Rendell? Yes. Okay, let's move on now to the voting.
Thank you. Um, my question is very typically, I've seen that the level of, of, I guess, for the amount of need that is going to run within this facility. And also considering that, and I know this is just a plan, but how are we going to determine the need for the appropriate number of computers to accommodate not only the library venues, but whatever training that you're going to be doing?
Thank you, good morning. Um, so our program is based on need. We still don't know what the need is. However, we are required to, um, provide remote access to our services. So our, our actual office is here in town and it's very hard for people to get to us. So we have to get to them. Um, the actual training would be based on the need. Um, the computers would be provided by our program. The reason why it's closed up now and we had to make those changes is not to change anything of what, of the library setting. The privacy, the quiet, everything else that we need in the library setting, we have to be set aside from that. We can provide other computers for whatever other services may be needed in the library. So it's not that we're limiting our computers and our services to our program. So that would be available on top of whatever was already there in the library. When we went and checked with what, three, three computer stations, which in our reality, I don't think is enough for our library. So, but those three stations would still remain there within the library for use in the library. However, we will have additional space, additional library, additional training for whatever the needs may be in terms of career, employment, workforce, or any other kind of training. The English language, GED, you know, all the services that we provide here to be able to provide also. Does that answer a couple of questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Conclude with it, O'Neil? Dan?
Uh, yes, morning.
Good morning.
Um, I have a quick question. Um, your presentation is before the library with this plan. Do you have a date out yet of your presentation, of your plan?
Um, maybe I'm misunderstanding. So this presentation to?
Yeah, you said that you're going to be presenting this plan to the library, you know, in Sonoda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, uh, so do you have a date for that?
I do not have a date. Um, the manager and, and the supervisor are going to set that up. But I, if I had to tell you, it's the beginning of next month sometime. Beginning of March.
Of March, okay. And regarding the computer situation, you said you, when you were first getting there to Jackson, I heard you say something to be effective, that there was going to be a D release in another computer stations. Did that have anything to do with workforce or?
No, I'm sorry, I, I must have missed hope, but we, we were representing the, we had about five or six stations, computer stations, that we were representing in the plan view. We just shrunk, I just was, uh, highlighting the changes in, in, in one plan from the other. I really have nothing to do, how many, uh, computers are out there? I think Denise is the person who's going to decide how many go out there. Yeah, we'll work.
That's not a hard, that's not a hard, if you've got shown here, there's room for more if needed.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, just one more thing that I'd like to add, just give them the faces of what, what's going to occur once we get final approval and everybody's content with what we want to do. So once, maybe after that March meeting, once, if there's any revisions, we'll do the revisions. But once everybody's content, uh, we'll do the design. And once the design's done, it should take, um, I'm going to be conservative here for about six months. Once that design is completed, then we'll bid it out. Now, the, the bid out process is anywhere from a month to two months, depending on the response. Um, we'll keep you informed. I did tell you earlier, there's some, there's some items or some offices here that we could get started ahead of time if, once we, you know, it's agreed because it's a different funding source. My understanding right now is that for, for the whole renovation, it's going to come out of the county's budget, um, unless I'm told otherwise. So that's why we have to wait and go through that process.
Thank you very much, ask for more.
You're welcome.
I think just curious.
Uh, the only question I have is what is the acronym WIOE stands for?
Marisa?
Workforce.
Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act.
Workforce what?
Innovation Opportunity Act.
I can teach here.
Opportunity, okay. Opportunity Act.
ACT.
Okay, ACT.
ACT is.
So that's federal money, I guess.
Yes.
Conclude, Mary?
Yes.
Hey, Barbara?
I'm fine.
And I do.
Well, you've all been answered.
Minister Rendell has asked for another round, so we'll start the second round with Minister Rendell.
Okay. Uh, your budget estimate, three hundred and fifty, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, does that, is that just the construction and renovation? Does that include furniture, uh, bookshelves perhaps, conference rooms, tables, chairs? Or is it just the physical renovation?
Physical renovation, yes.
That's what I suspected. Okay. And then I hope this is my last question, um, is that we have a suggestion for our revision, to whom should we direct it? To you or to Mrs. St. John or to?
Miss St. John.
To Miss St. John. To Miss St. John.
That would one content person.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the same way for the board members, uh, you know, Mr. Vandewell's concerned, if you do have suggestions, please file a report that I need, so we stay forward here and what's going to happen, that I need to be the link to Mrs. St. John. Any other, do you have anything else? Ed?
Find me.
Uh, Veronica? Ned?
No, I'm Heather Ross.
Jerry?
No.
And Barbara? I just want to say, um, I introduce the deputy county manager under agenda item number two, the library district presentation. I don't think you were aware, and Mrs. St. John didn't give you any information about the library district, did she?
She did not.
Okay, so, Minister Vandewell's presentation should be under item three, Sonoyta Library expansion update. That is his presentation. And item number two, I will table until next month, when Mrs. St. John returns, and we can tell her to make that presentation at that time. Um, Minister Vandewell, Mrs. Vandewell, thank you very much for your appearance, thank you very much for your eloquent presentation. These gifts and the knowledge that you presented are very valuable to various community members here on the board of representatives, very, very attractive throughout the country. So thank you very much for the presentation.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate the kind words, thank you.
Well, now...
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Well, now, I'd more like to get into the security of main library. Uh, Chief Roger Lewis is here, along with Lieutenant Robert Daniels. Do you want to give a background on that, and then we'll have the chief come on and speak a little bit to you, can I ask?
So, definitely on the main library and security issues, issues just, uh, you guys, some of the issues around security, just light, the lighting, everything, the lighting project, and the alarm that keeps going off, just suddenly getting into the reports, so Chief Roger Lewis is going to come on.
Welcome, Chief Roger Lewis.
My name is Jer, thank you, good morning.
Good morning.
Go ahead, any further questions?
Um, I talked to Daniza this morning as far as to, uh, which is told I had to be here today to answer any questions, so I really don't have a presentation other than I, uh, printed out some stats as far as to, uh, cost per service for the library for the last fiscal year, which is a total of forty. Um, I'll hang up, I'll hand out these, uh, these forms, and it really breaks down every call that we had. There's thirteen alarm activations, one animal problem, three disorderly conducts, one phone property, uh, one, uh, served order of protection, a couple of security checks, one suicide attempt, uh, and seventeen suspicious calls, and one traffic hazard. Uh, other than that, uh, we really try to keep, uh, security checks of the library for obvious reasons, you know, because of the, the youth in the community and stuff like that, however, people seem to, uh, congregate in the, at the park right next to the library, in front of the library. Uh, my understanding from Daniza is that, uh, there's, we're going to have some light in there, uh, which would help tremendously, uh, because that's, that's an easy hideout during the night hours, during the dark hours. Uh, if there's light there, obviously, our officers can, can, uh, you know, see what's, what's in there as they pass or as they, you know, uh, get in there. Um, other than that, um, we've had a total of thirteen alarm activations. I had a conversation with Daniza this morning that we need to change the, uh, key holder. The key holder is, is, is basically the person that the alarm company calls for them to not, be notified of the alarm activation. Um, right now, it's the city of Nogales or Nogales Police Department, however, we don't have access into the library, so we would, if anything happens, we would have to call Daniza, and, uh, so she's, she wasn't aware of these alarm activations, so I think we need to, we need to change, uh, this, and, and we will hopefully today. Um, other than that, I'm, I'm here for any questions, any suggestions, any opinions, or anything that you guys might have for Nogales Police Department.
Chief, was there a discussion that, that service, uh, on going in and rocking and library, or, or, is that, they didn't have any problems with non-patents, i.e. homeless individuals, that go into the bathroom, take up the space in the bathroom, and he was to clean themselves up, but at the same time, we have our young patrons, elementary school students, that enter the bathroom, and they're not able to show, uh, what's happening in the bathroom. Does that explain that correctly? Could you help us address that?
What I'm getting from your comment is that there's, uh, homeless people going in there and probably cleaning themselves up and taking up, uh, I guess, a bath?
Sink bath.
Sink bath, yes. Um, in, in that, that situation, what, uh, I recommend the library personnel do is, is call, uh, call us, um, because it's, it's, it's hard being a public library to, um, disperse people because it's, it's a public library. So, um, we can't discriminate because of how they're dressed, how they, you know, the, what they're carrying, or whatever the case might be, unless, as you, as you heard, we have seventeen suspicious activity calls. Uh, I'm not sure what it, what they all entail, but I suppose probably some of them are what you're talking about, the situation that you're talking about. The only thing I can say is do not hesitate to call the Nogales Police Department, anything you see something out of place, or anything, anytime you see something like, the situation that you're talking about happen, and we'll go address the issue again.
Okay, let me go down, uh, see if the board has any questions or concerns for you. Chief Roger Lewis. Jerry? All right.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Chief, for coming. Uh, yeah, well, you have to kind of understand the mentality of the library and the library, we have a librarian and a library staff dedicated to the public, and they're not, uh, trained or dedicated to law enforcement, or dealing with these extremely social issues that are presented by some of the, the public that come in, and we were referencing in the conversation. You mentioned in your, in your report statistics, one suicide attempt, I believe. If you could possibly imagine the drama and the trauma, emotional trauma to the librarian and her staff to have to deal with a situation like that, I know it's something perhaps more, well, not common, but something that you're trained in, I can guarantee you, the librarian's not trained in dealing with something like that, so it's extremely emotional, and, uh, I would hope that you would elevate your concern and your dedication to the public and to the institution, and, uh, I know you're trying to, and I hope you say you will, that you exit, will execute a greater, uh, observation, probably with a little bit more attention, it would be a deterrent to those popular park in the, in the front of the library, and, uh, perhaps using the restroom as a, as a sink bath. Um, so, please, please raise your, your, your concern for the library and your human policies.
Sure.
Thank you.
Want to do another? Ed?
Yeah, I have a couple, uh, questions on that, is, from, some of the feedback that we've gotten from the library staff is controlling the traffic utilizing the restrooms in the library. My suggestion to that would be that the staff control who, what public patrons come to use the facilities at the library with a key, and that the key be held by a staff person. At least that person can make a judgment if they would need to call the police department for, for backup support, or at least know who's going to use the bathrooms, and the public becomes aware of the fact that in order to use the facilities, they have to go to a staff person to secure the key to the restroom, and, and working at, at that way. The other, uh, question I have because of, it, it's not just a public library, but it's a city park adjacent to the library, and we have a community of public traffic that utilizes that park. My suggestion is that there would be periodic posting of a police vehicle, uh, that's visible from both the library and the park, and just seeing the vehicles present, say for an hour in the morning or an hour in the afternoon, uh, folks will hesitate to take action when they see a vehicle in the presence. Doesn't mean that it commits the time of the, of the officer, but I think it would deter the public from taking, uh, a spontaneous action that would affect the, the staff at the library without having to necessarily be going into the library and committing the staff to something that they are possibly not prepared to deal with, but just by the physical presence of a vehicle at different intervals will have some emotional effect on the public patrons that utilize both the park and the library area. Those are the, my suggestions.
Okay, Ed, do you have a response to Mr. Elsie's comments?
Uh, no, that's a great idea, actually, the, I think the key part of it is an awesome idea, however, I don't, uh, I'm not, uh, going to interfere with, uh, Daniza's operations, but that's, that is a great idea. That way, they can, they can handle, uh, they can have control over who's in and who's out, and if there's any issues of anybody trying to use the bathroom for alternate, uh, methods or, or, or things to do, then, then they can, they can always call us.
Okay, Veronica?
Thank you very much. Can I understand that you have a schedule report of something to hand out?
Yes, ma'am.
Or the dates on it?
Uh, I'll give you the report and dates, dates, times, and everything that's, that you might want to know, um, around it.
The second part would be, um, if we could have some updates so that we'll know if we're having an improved situation or not, so this would be kind of like, start point, and let us see where we're going. So the next one's here.
I announce, let me just, I'll leave it out to you. Okay, you're here, Ned, suspicious.
Yes, Chief, or this, thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions. Did you mention that, uh, we have received thirteen alarm calls?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we know the nature of those?
Hmm, right off the bat, no. Uh, I mean, the times and the dates are there, I'm not sure of the outcome, obviously, there's, there's, uh, there's nothing, there were, there weren't, there wasn't any entry, because if it wouldn't, uh, if that was the case, it would be classified as something else, a burglary or...
Oh, you're saying it's a security alarm?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, that's one thing. Um, is there any staff dedicated to that police department to dealing with social issues? And the reason I'm asking that question is, if, if there, let's say there's an issue with some of the library, rather than calling nine-one-one or emergency situations, is there any one person dedicated to?
That's, that's the, uh, the hot, uh, issue right now with law enforcement, is that I've been working for the, for the police department for the last thirty-eight years, uh, thirty-five of those years as a police officer. Uh, over the, the last thirty-five years, I've seen our job responsibility shift more towards, towards social issues than enforcement and protection. Uh, and we're expected to, to be the counselors, the, uh, uh, everything for everybody, right? Uh, so we're, we're, as a law enforcement community, we constantly try to work towards the ever-changing, uh, needs of, of our communities, right? Um, I can tell you right now that one of the hot items right now that we're dealing with is the use of, um, uh, drug, drug use, actually. In the last, and I don't have the stats right in front of me, but the last year, we probably had, um, I would say maybe about twenty-five minimum overdoses. Um, we've, uh, been successful in most of them, I think we've lost a couple of them, uh, but that's something that now our officers carry in our camp, and, and that's the only reason that we've been successful in bringing these people back to live another day and overdose another day, right? So we're expected to go and make sure that they don't do this again, uh, while addressing other issues of protection, of, of enforcement, of being ambassadors of our community. Uh, so we have, we, we have a, a big basket of, uh, of things that we need to do, and, and don't get me wrong, I mean, we're willing to do this, but sometimes, you know, one plate gets full and the other one is, is kind of still waiting for us to start on it and stuff like that, so, um, we're working on it, ma'am. Uh, right now, one of the projects that I'm, that I'm going to start working on aggressively, and I tried it in the past, but I, I, uh, it, it's, uh, it's called VITS, it's an acronym for volunteer, volunteers and police services, and it's a, it's a volunteer, uh, uh, squad of, of mostly retired individuals, if, if you may, uh, that go out there voluntarily and just beat the eyes and ears to the department, and, uh, and, uh, I think that, that will solve a lot of these issues, that they can get off at the library, that they can get off at the schools, that they can do, uh, house checks for us, if they can take minor calls, open vehicles for us. Uh, basically, let us do what we need to do, let us be the protectors of the enforcers, and help us, they can help us with the ambassadorship of our community. So, there's so many things that we're trying to do, but, I mean, just like anything else, it's, uh, it's...
It's anonymous.
Yes, it, it's taxing, to say the least.
Sure is. Um, do you have, I think one more question, do you have any idea of how, what the homeless, the homeless issue is in Nogales, or any other, uh, health thing, problem is that related, you know, contrary to the drug situation, that sometimes it's both, you know, but, or any, any others?
And I'll tell you, the homeless issue that we have in Nogales is not something that, uh, that's astronomical. I think we, we get a homeless person, and they stay here for a couple of months, and then they move on, and then we get somebody else new and stuff like that, but, um, I would, uh, unless Lieutenant, uh, Leal has, has any, uh, information on that, uh, I don't think we have a big issue with that. You know, one of the people, one of the, the entities that really helps us is, is the mission, uh, because they take in the, the people that, that are homeless or whatever for a couple of days, uh, granted, they don't have a record or, or stuff like that, right? Um, but we don't, we don't have a big issue, and, uh, as a matter of fact, I just met this gentleman, um, what's his name, I think his name is Dennis. Um, I offered to buy him lunch, I don't, I don't know if you guys have seen him on Mariposa Road, he's, he's, he's pushing a cart. Um, he's, I mean, if you ever get a chance to talk to him, he's, he's a, he's a character. Uh, and I, I've been looking for him too, I haven't had, two things, I haven't had time and I haven't found him, right? Uh, but I had an hour conversation with him as far as to where he came from, and what his background is and stuff like that, and he's a, he's a pretty sharp individual, and, and some people just decide to live like that. Uh, you know, I, I, I offered him food, he says, no, I just ate. I gave him five dollars, and, I mean, it was, hey, thank you, you know, but, but I had a good conversation with him, but, like I said, we don't have a homeless, uh, problem in Nogales. I think it's more of a transitional part for them to be here, and they're usually here during the winter months, right? In the summer, uh, and the summer, we got, we have a couple of them, right? Because they'd rather be here than in Tucson. Thank God they haven't discovered that Nogales is cooler than Tucson, because then we, then we would have a problem, right? Uh, but that's, that's what we're dealing with at, at the present time.
Thank you very much for your answers, please.
Jerry, do you have a second?
Yes, uh, getting this list, I'd like to know a little bit, were the alarms, were they just false alarms, and also, some idea, a kind of a summary of what...
Your high volunteer?
Were these, you know, thirteen alarms, what, what caused the alarm, or were they just false? And also suspicious, there are seventeen suspicious incidents, just a kind of a narrative or a summary of what kinds of things constituted that suspicion, because there are a couple that are late in the day, but, um, generally, you know, what, what, what does it mean, you know, somebody's suspicious or something? So those are my two questions from the list.
A suspicious can be a sleuth of, of, of things, it could be somebody that the library personnel called, or a passerby called, so it doesn't necessarily need to be inside the, the actual building. Uh, we're looking at when we ask... Uh, we're looking at when we ask for a, a printout of a, of a, uh, we ask for an address. So it could be behind the library, it could be next to the library, it doesn't necessarily need to be inside the library.
So these are not necessarily triggered by the library?
Hmm, no sir.
And the alarms, there were thirteen alarms during the year. Were they just false alarms or some?
Well, we, we went to check them and there's, there's nothing, there's nothing out of place that, that looked out of place. So, uh, if, again, like I said earlier, if there was, if there was something that happened, it would be classified as a burglary, as damaged property, as something else other than a, uh, an alarm activation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I've just had a comment about the alarms. Um, almost all of them were from January through March of the twenty-one. Wasn't there any, you got a malfunction in the alarm system earlier in the twenty-one?
Yeah, the back, in the back area of the library, the alarm kept going on because of the train passes, so that was setting off the alarm.
Yeah, Mike, I have a couple of concerns. One is the image that we have geographically as a border community places, I think, greater responsibility in your department. Of which either the city council or the county do not have any authority because it's a federal issue. And I don't know that the federal system communicates for your input before they come into a decision. I can recall Mayor Garino's, uh, position with the, uh, circuitino wire that was collected along the wall and, and pretty much condemned the federal use of that. And it's that image that impacts you in how you carry out your duties, really, to your officers. Uh, the question that really impacts us locally is the image of our community in how it functions under those circumstances. And I think it's, uh, it's an important issue that you unfortunately have to deal with after the cause. And I wonder if you can address that.
Sure. My, my job is, is, uh, is not political and I need to remain apolitical. Unfortunately, what happens at the border or at the border fence, obviously, the, uh, the federal government does not, uh, ask us for our opinion. Again, in the last, uh, thirty-eight years that I've been here, our job doesn't change. Our job is to be protectors, to be enforcers, and most importantly, right now, in this, in this day and age, to be ambassadors of our community. To make sure that whatever they see on the news, the negativity, is not what they come and see here. So our image has a lot to do with our everyday functions of Nogals Police Department, sir.
Thank you.
Um, yes, I'm gonna have this in hand. I can see that, please, I'm reading it, this, right? This is from, uh, January coming on to December coming on.
Yes ma'am.
And my response would be, is it feasible to get a quarterly report so we can just track any improvement or change?
Absolutely.
All very solid.
Thank you. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chief, do you want to find a homeless individual? He seems to have the interest in the community college, and I see him every morning when I go to the meeting. But he leaves by six thirty when I walk down, he's packing up and taking off. So if I'm finding I have a morning conversation, he's already.
And I promised him I was gonna come back and have lunch with him, so I, I can.
Also, Chief, if it will be possible, get him back to the wrong at the time here. If, it doesn't have to be you, Chief, maybe the lieutenant can come and we can put it on our agenda at the beginning and at the end of this, approve the security report.
Okay.
On a monthly basis, then the wrong people will get it, the other users will be named, and that would be very helpful for us. So we can save a lot of this issue, so there's not, that doesn't escape us. And thank you very much, Chief, for your presentation. Uh, very much, and I hope that we can have this continued review with the police department and maybe your little, uh, successful program, uh, coffee with the cop. You can do it right here with us right here, and tell us a little bit on what's going on over there, so we can save the rest of it. And make sure that we don't have the young kids meeting with the bad of the adults that should be here.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Chief, for your presentation.
Thank you for trying.
Okay, then let's move on now to item five, this is a cost of action to approve minutes of January the twelve twenty-two meeting. Uh, Arma?
First of all, thanks to Chief, because she does a lot of work on this.
She does.
And there may still be a few errors. I noticed that we made a few changes after Gary got printed in. But I would like to move to the extended minutes if they are.
Motion, Arma, to accept the minutes of January the twelve twenty-two as presented.
Second, second.
Second item, if you're comfortable, the discussion, objections, motion of errors. May I consider the discussion on honorable votes, Nan?
Yes, um, I'm not as well prepared as some of the others going to do.
We're gonna move it to the next meeting.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's spoken about, the program that they're updating to.
Item will go ahead and table, again, the item six for our next meeting. Item seven, is the town attorney, committee, could review twenty-one of your survey results? Veronica?
Thank you very much. Um, this was presented at a board meeting several meetings ago. And it led to the survey that Nan and Ryan and what's on our Twitter, put out to the public. We got some responses and, um, also a handful of people that said they would be happy to volunteer, uh, do volunteer work in the library. We haven't ever done anything with that, and I'm putting this out to the board. Is this worth a read? It's just because there's a lot of hard work that was put out. And there may be some motive that it doesn't cost a lot to put into place or to recommend that we need to put into place. And it's just an opportunity to review, so just putting it out to the board, the boards, uh, putting a committee together to review.
Okay, so the question is, for the board, is this gonna give us a yes or no approval? Do you think it is time really for us to add a committee to come back within ninety days, uh, with objectives for, from the library survey, uh, staying in the trees, regardless of that?
Um, yeah, we did do a quick synopsis of the responses from that survey, um, to deal with one thing versus another. And I think it might be helpful to, because I don't wear my copy, because if we had, uh, for the next meeting to look at, see if there's anything worth pursuing on that list.
So, why, why don't, why don't we, we do this? Why don't we go ahead and, uh, Nita, give them the update? I have time to review it, and we'll put this item back on the agenda. Item, uh, seven, eight back on the agenda of the board. Is that okay? Is that okay, Nan?
Yeah.
Okay, that's why we're gonna do that. Uh, on agenda, on agenda, item number nine. Board to appoint the Val Lelce approved by Mayor Council. This is to just notify the board that we send the recommendation to the Mayor Council to re-appoint , um, Mr. Elsie to the board, and he was, uh, reconfirmed by the Mayor Council. And then we just need to, Jerry, we need to hear from you to get together with Nita, if you wanted to continue, the return, I think, expired March next month.
Okay.
Okay, now we'll move to item ten, board member, someone who wanted to vote, Nanita?
Thank you, Jerry. I just wanna come back to see, um, each one of you has thought about what you're gonna be doing for this, this is a library coming to, so I'll just go around the board and, um.
On this, uh, library reward goal, if you could please get it together in a private, you know, cell, within a week, so we can have a public public discussion on that. So when you're ready, just call it out or you'll call you or me. All right, then let's move on to item five, uh, board reports. Remember, board reports are currently pending, so we must agree. And there cannot be any proposals, discussions, deliberations, or legal actions to date this. Nan?
Uh, this time.
Jerry? Arma?
I have one thing to report from Dan. Um, he needs to give a one thousand dollar check from Jim Bliss, which he he offered to all of the non-profit organizations, which we are one of. So when we see you pause it all, I'm gonna be pausing it. All right.
And, and I hear from one of my partners here that they are now in the process of restarting the agenda.
All right, I have a email on that. It's gonna start in February. They're gonna be kicking me off, and that's for the community. But he also has a show that he wants to do. Um, I have a little fan's decision to continue that for a quarter of us.
Well, if you wanna have a little bit more discussion of that, put it on the agenda, item, Lelita. Some way you can talk on that. Brian?
Thank you. I'd like to comment that in the past month, I have received multiple comments observation about library hours. And the back, it closes at four-thirty in the afternoon, when it's virtually possible for school students to utilize the library's facilities. And the back, the night of them on Saturday. And so in this board report, uh, like I said, here is from the public, multiple comments in the past month.
Thank you. What do you have? Ed?
From the, the Friends, uh, organization. I submitted the reports to both the IRS and the corporation commission. And I have not gotten, uh, any negative reports about the status of the report, but, uh, they were both due from May fifteenth. And I just wanted to get it out of my mind and have both, both of the entities that oversee the existence of things. And I'm waiting to see if, uh, some response comes out, so I'm just figuring some version. And just, uh, who are you going to?
Thank you, Veronica. Nan?
Um, this is going back to the department on that. Is that for you?
Okay, let's move on here. Let's move on here now. Uh, let's go on to library directors' report, Nita?
Uh, Ryan, can you present her book on Saturday, December, November, that have been around Saturday? Were we able to accommodate her and cover poster presentation inside? There were over fifty people at Starbucks today at work. And it was a good turnout for, for the doctor, as far as library statistics or anything, there were only two people that used the library. We were open for over four hours, one meeting, two computers, and, uh, Ryan checked out the book. But, and, but it was a great turnout for them, for the doctor. That was on that. That's on that. Um, I know all of our names for early childhood education.
All right, um, so February is early childhood education month. Uh, the library has been working with the academy or with Christian. Um, they are organizing differently than school for the, for the community. Uh, this nineteenth is, this is Saturday. Uh, there's gonna be a child care program resource fair, this resource fair is coming. We're able to get information about the size of the meeting. Uh, it's gonna be a Zoom. So we're gonna have, um, fellow representatives in that. There are also, um, we also recorded some videos, uh, with the staff, talking about the importance of early childhood education. Uh, Nita, now I went to the early childhood literacy conference last week, and I will have Nita talk about that one too. So, this was a really, um, different experience than the one I went three years ago. Uh, it was really, uh, the sole purpose of this, um, journey was to learn about the importance of early childhood education. The importance that literacy, literacy plays in child's life, so it's really important. Um, from zero to every age, it's really important, literacy is really important. It's nice learning about the development of, uh, of children. We also got the opportunity to connect with other libraries around the state. Uh, it was incredible to see how they're all facing the same challenges, even the large charters and people who have been out all these big years are facing a lot of problems with open. So we're all struggling, we're trying to get the public into libraries, trying to let, um, trying to grab more information, do programs. Not many are doing, um, programs. So there are really few libraries that are doing in-person programs. And the ones that are doing the in-person programs are struggling to even get people in. So they have it up to ten, I assume, they won't even get five. Many libraries refer it over to the technological ways, which include story time, all, all this type of stuff. They're paying subscriptions, less than fifty percent of those subscriptions are being used by the patrons. Um, libraries that have been open up to nine AM that have no open on weekends have closed down those hours. And that's saying past five. There are plenty staff, Monday through Friday, full staff, and trying to work any ideas to see how they can work with the public. So it was nice to see that it's not just our library struggling with the pandemic, but also the other libraries. And you would figure, you know, that we have many activities, many programs. We're all in the same page, so it was really nice to actually connect to other libraries.
Okay, the South Asian Community Club team space has been submitted for ten thousand dollars. I think there's that a couple weeks ago. Um, so, and the next thing, the budget for library centennial celebration, like you said, that I had said, I would be asking for ten thousand dollars. This is coming budget, and then every ten thousand in the next year's upcoming budget. That's, that's the part I'm aware of. Oh, and just a reminder that staff shadow days start today, so Jerry and Ryan, I'll see you at the library at one. That's it.
Okay, we're gonna move on now to future agenda items. Nan?
First off, uh, Friends will be meeting after our board meeting. And I try to do this in order to honor that everybody's.
But that's not a future agenda, just a future agenda.
And that will be a future agenda issue. So that our board members know that future meetings of the library board will be followed by Friends. Secondly, I want to congratulate the staff for dealing with the pandemic and reminding that they have been following the cities, uh. My thoughts, if, if anything, because I know that I personally was impacted by that one time. Uh, and once it was relaxed, the, the library staff, uh, we were helpful. You know, I'm probably in France to meet and ask the library for the special meeting there. So working along with that, uh, then working also with Nita and Nita. And to, uh, do, to make sure that the agenda that, that, uh, that proposed for our Friends meeting are also exchanged with the, uh, lessons and copies of it. Does everybody else get the, the lessons and copies that we're gonna commit?
Ed?
And we'll continue to do this.
Please, those, those remarks that are appropriate under board reports. Future agenda, is this what you want, meeting the list on the agenda? All the reports that you get right now, that is another item. Let's move on. What do you have?
Yes, I would like to see the results of the, um, goals that we both started to discuss with the Nita, the goals of the, uh, the board members. Would there be some kind of reports that we can share and who would ever have to say? So just put that back on the board and results. So just put that back on the board members' thoughts.
Board member, that was item ten, she said it to you.
I'm sorry.
Is that item ten that you were talking about here, uh, is this agenda, is this agenda?
Uh, yes.
That one that we didn't able to, I see you. All right, Brian?
Thank you, I would like an agenda item to continue, especially the hours of library when they're open. Um, what obstacles there are to working when at the end of the stretch, I suppose, they're going to a forty-hour week? What obstacles there are to rearranging the current hours, offering different hours, uh, to, uh, set aside requirements with demands of the public?
Okay, we will put that in there, Ed, have a discussion with you. All right.
Uh, sure, this is agenda, we need to know the, we have a location that we're doing these office rotations for participation, but we don't have the dates. Well, like, today was surprise, Brian, I mean, to Jerry. So, so on the agenda, we need the dates, uh, when we're extending the meeting of the libraries.
Oh, the shadow dates, uh, we're also providing the last ones happening, so it's just sort of like years, but I'll put them down at some.
Okay.
Okay, Jerry?
No, I won't have that.
Uh, all right. Our next meeting is scheduled for March the ninth. And then the time right here, and then, once again, uh, I'd like to, there was a comment made on the minutes and everything like that. Judith, you will, on that, you remember all the work that you're doing to help us, you were there, I mentioned to Judith today that the minutes of the library were not longer than the minutes of the city council, when I used to read the ones of the city councils. Quite comprehensive. All right, and then I take the motion to adjourn the meeting at eleven forty-five. Second by Juanita, to adjourn the meeting at eleven forty-five, the meeting is adjourned. This is the shadow period.